...2019. I have a special guest to my left, Kennedy, who's going to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance, and she's a lot cuter than Councilman Hankin, so, everybody rise, please. And Kennedy, why don't you come on up over here, sweetie? And the flag's right there, and it's all yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kennedy. Chief Coleman, you can do the honors for us.
Just looking upon this country, we ask that you watch over it with all the tragedies happening last week or so throughout our nation. We still live in the greatest nation on this earth. We ask that you watch over our leaders of the country, the state, the county, and the city, that we ask you to get your blessing upon them and their families as they go about doing the business of governance of the people, Lord. We ask that you protect those that are in this audience and those that are watching, and give them safe travels as they travel home. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. This time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. As I said earlier, this is the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, June 3rd, 6:30 PM. We have all members of council present.
You know what? That was, she did great. You look great up here. She didn't have an ounce of terror on her at all. That's a future leader, right there. Good job, Kennedy.
Our first item of business actually may involve Kennedy, but we will bring her family up. Chief, where are you? Why don't you come on up? We'll come join you down at the podium, and we have some promotions to talk about, correct?
Fire Rescue, Rachel and the promoted two employees, both of these individuals along with several others were required to successfully complete a very competitive and challenging promotional. The first position we are going to announce before we've been, please have Josh Maddox and his family join us up front.
Josh Maddox joined the Fire Department in 2002. During his time with the City of Oviedo, he has obtained his State of Florida Paramedic Certification and his State of Florida Fire Officer One Certification. Lieutenant Paramedic Maddox has been assigned to Engine 44 on A shift. Honorable Mayor, if you would please present the certificate of recognition to Joshua, and then I'll present the badge to his wife.
Alrighty, this is, this reads, "Oviedo Fire Rescue Certificate of Recognition is hereby presented to Joshua Maddox for his promotion to the position of Fire Lieutenant on this third day of June 2019." Josh, congratulations.
Perfect. Great job.
For an extra motion, we would like to announce this for the position of Division Chief. If I could please have Stephen Livingston and his family join us up front? Division Chief Livingston joined the Oviedo Fire Department in 2009 and has since obtained his State of Florida Paramedic Certification and his State of Florida Fire Officer One and Fire Officer Two certifications. He currently holds a bachelor's degree from the University of Central Florida.
Go Knights.
And is working towards obtaining his master's degree in Emergency Services Management. Division Chief Stephen Livingston has been assigned today as part of the department's management team. Honorable Mayor, if you would, please present the certificate, and then we'll present the badge for pending.
Now, Jeff, I know that was rough for you, being a Gator, right? Yeah, alrighty. Stephen, this is a certificate from the Oviedo Fire Rescue Certificate of Recognition is hereby presented to Stephen Livingston for your promotion to the position of Division Chief on this third day of June 2019. Now, it's hard to believe that you are Division Chief here in the city, and I've known you since you were about that big, so, congratulations, my friend. Great job. You want to hold this for Daddy? Are we not going to let Mom do it?
She's asked me to do it, so.
Oh, okay.
You sure? I think it was you last time who poked him, right?
Kennedy should do it. Great job. Congratulations.
Line up for a picture, and, sorry, Steve. Hold the certificate up the other way. The right way.
Alrighty. Excellent job, guys.
I watched Josh, but he said, "You want to get a picture of the family up here?" Begin again? It's up to you. Yeah, you can. Okay.
Stephen would like his family to come join him up here so he can get one big group picture with you all. Everybody. You're the family, right? Mother of his children, just checking.
Do we get to sit in the chairs?
Yes, Rick, you can go sit in the chair. Okay, Josh, last time, you sure? Get one with all your family? Come on up. Come on.
There's a lot of us. I'm saying yes.
There you go. Well, we listen to the boss. Anybody have a cellphone that want me to shoot a picture for them? Take it on yours?
You don't mind, Mr. Mayor?
No, not at all, of course.
It's ready to go.
We'll give you two.
Okay.
I just make sure I get everything pretty back away, so. Don't worry, Rick, I hate yours away already.
Congratulations, guys.
Alrighty, so we can move on to the rest of the meeting now. Everybody who's been promoted, we can take a two-second recess. If you all want to head off to dinner or something, you don't have to stay around. Thank you, everyone, congratulations.
Barski's buying.
Alrighty. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the May 20th, 2019 regular session. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion?
No, sir, it looks good.
Good?
Good.
Alrighty. Hearing none called the vote, all in favor of the motion to adopt the minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the public comment portion of the meeting. I have no written request this evening. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, I will close public comment and move on to the consent agenda, items four through seven. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? Councilman Hankin?
Nope, looks good.
Councilman Britton?
Good.
Do my right?
I've got a, I've got a question.
Sure.
The, the generator, the loan for the generator, is that, is there a possibility that we could find a, a used one that we could maybe purchase in the timeframe as we're ordering the, waiting for the new one to come in with that, with that, with that money, or is this something that we just need to lease and?
The new generator is installed, and the rental was not anticipated to take as long as it did. That's why it's being presented.
Right. Right. I just didn't know if, for the $94,000 that we're, we're paying for the rental, or anticipated for the rental, if there was something that we could have, could buy and have as like a backup in the future? I didn't know if that was available or not.
I'm sure that was evaluated, but I think the liabilities and finding a reliable generator that's used is also kind of a concern.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilman?
That's all.
Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry. No? Alrighty, any other questions on the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the vote. The motion on the table is to adopt. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to the only action item on our agenda this evening. It's item number eight. Give me a moment here to catch up. And this is ordinance number 1683. It's amending Chapter 28, Articles 1 and 2 of the Code of Ordinances, and it is updating our impact fees. Mr. Groot, can you read this by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In order to the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending Chapter 28, Articles 1 and 2 of the City of Oviedo Code of Ordinances, update impact fees for multimodal facilities, fire and rescue, emergency medical service, law enforcement, recreation and park, and administrative facilities. Adopting an impact fee update study, revising impact fee schedules in land use categories, individual assessments, updating and indexing, and providing precodification, implementing administrative acts, savings provision conflicts, correction of scripters errors, separability, and ineffective date. And that's the ordinance by title. That's Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Mr. Cop, I mean, Mr. Kelly. Do you have any, anything to add for us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. This is a request for the City Council to approve an update of the city's multimodal transportation, fire and rescue, law enforcement, recreation parks, and administrative facilities impact fees. Section 28-12 of the Code of Ordinances requires the city to update its impact fee technical report every five years. The last technical report was updated in 2013. On February 5th, 2018, the City Council adopted Resolution Number 3527-18, selecting Tyndale Oliver Debt Associates to provide the city's impact fee technical report. This technical report updates the city impact fee technical calculations, updates the inventory of capital facilities for the five impact fees, updates the cost of new development to the city for the five new impact fees, and updates the city's impact fee schedules for the five impact fees. Some fees increased while others decreased. Since some of the fees have increased, Florida statutes requires a 90-day public notice period before the fees can become effective. The impact fees listed on ordinance number 1683 are the maximum fees that can be charged. City staff concurs with the findings for the updated technical report and recommends adoption of ordinance number 1683. Ms. Negan Camp from Tyndale Oliver is here to present an updated technical report and its finding, and its findings. I would like to turn the presentation over to her, and it is also recommended that City Council conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance 1683.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Good evening. I'm Negan Camp with Tyndale Oliver. I also have Steve Tyndale, who's the principal in charge. This presentation is very similar to the one that you saw during the workshop, so I'll go quickly, but like, feel free to, you know, let me know if you need me to slow down on that. Next slide. We have, the presentation basically is organized to give a little bit of a background and then address each one of the fee areas individually. So the impact fee program was originally implemented in 1980s, and it was last updated in 2013. And it, like mentioned, it was, it's in a five-year cycle to comply with the ordinance requirements, as well as the state requirements of reflecting the most recent and localized data. By definition, impact fees are one-time capital charge to new development, and the purpose is really to cover capital costs necessitated by new growth, and helps implement the capital improvement plans. The purpose is maintaining the level of service the city provides, and it does calculate the cost of growth. In that sense, it's useful in the case of potential large developments, and it is most needed when there is high growth and limited alternative funding. The study itself is using a consumption-based methodology, which is also the basis of the current adopted fees, and it charges new growth based on its consumption of the, a given capacity, capacity of a given infrastructure. So the basic impact fee formula looks at cost of providing an infrastructure, so that's the capital cost, and from that, we subtract any non-impact fee contributions from future development. So to the extent that city uses taxes, a portion of it is paid by new development, so that gets subtracted, and then that net cost is multiplied by demand for each land use. So it's either measured in terms of population or the travel, in the case of transportation. There are various components that I'll go through for each fee. It just starts with inventory, looks at the level of service, cost, credit, and the demand components. So we just wanted to give you a quick summary of the findings right now. So this is the calculated fees for each of the land, each of the service areas for several land uses. You have more land uses in the full fee schedule, but that kind of gives you a little bit of a sample. So the new single-family rate is around 61, 6200, multifamily is 47, and so on. And then next to that, what we have is the current rates, and now you can see that the increases are, you know, varying depending on the demand side component, and then in some cases, there are decreases, like the banks, and then we saw quite a bit of a decrease in industrial, and so on. So there's some new data that's really looked at the impact in terms of the trip generation rates and made some significant changes, so those are now reflected in the new schedule. So if we start with fire rescue, go ahead. Just to give you overall what changed, in terms of the demand, this is for single-family, that remained relatively stable. Cost increase, which increases the fee, and credit increased as well, which decreases the fee. So just by looking at cost-credit components, the increase would have been 15 to 25 percent. But then, the city has been indexing its fees since the last studies, which is working well, and that moderates the fluctuations over during the, between the full updates. So the fee is ending up increasing about 5 percent instead of 15 percent because you've been indexing. As far as the inventory, there are two fire stations, one administrative building, and we looked at the unit cost of, what those stations cost today, and we really relied on your recent construction, as well as data from other jurisdictions. And same type of thing with the land, looking at any recent land sales, and what the city paid, and any other data available. In terms of level of service, it's, I've measured in terms of stations per population for impact fee purposes, and you have, you are ending up about 20, almost 20,000 people per station. Go to the next slide. And when we compare that to other jurisdictions, you are sort of in the middle. We, we recognize that even though there are two stations, there are really three companies operating as though there were three stations, because the city used to have three stations and has the same capability, just consolidated two of the stations. In terms of the total asset value with buildings, land, vehicles, and so on, it ends up being about 12 million. So that translates into almost $360 per resident. So that number represents the investment the community has made up to this point into fire infrastructure. Again, credit is looking at any non-impact fee contributions for fire stations and vehicles and so on. So you have both cash credit for upcoming ladder truck purchase, and also the outstanding debt service for administrative facility, and as well as the expansion portion of the new consolidated station, not the total amount, but just for the expansion portion. We also recognize that new homes tend to pay higher ad valorem taxes, so credit accounts for that as well. So when we subtract the credit, the total credit between the cash purchases and debt service ends up being about $100 to $120, depending on the land use. So that gives us a net cost of 235 to 255 range. Then we take that number and multiply by persons per unit for each of the land uses, and so the residential, like, single-family ends up being about 480, light industrial's about 120, and so on. And this is giving some comparisons to other jurisdictions, and there are more than one slides on that, but it's ranging anywhere all the way up to $700 for single-family. Go to the next one. And the slide also, like, you have anything from 170 to 636, and so on. So if we move to law enforcement, it's the same type of analysis, so the demand did not change much. Cost increase, in this case, which increases the fee. Credit decrease, that also increases the fee. So the net cost-credit impact was about 100 percent, like doubling of the fee, but then the fee, because of the indexing, end up increasing about 87 percent. And the primary reason for this is when the fire station moved out of the Public Safety Building, public safety square footage doubled. So basically, law enforcement assets, building component doubled, and that, you see that in the fee. So there's about 16,000 square feet and about four acres, and again, same type of thing, we looked at what these type of buildings cost and estimated the total value of it. Level of service in terms of officers per thousand population, the city has about, little, about, right around two officers. And that's also kind of putting you sort of in the middle or, or, or upper section compared to other jurisdictions. So it's ranging anywhere from 1.2 to, oh, 3.7, I think I can. So the total asset value is about eight and a half million, and that translates into a cost of $245 per resident, so that's again, what the community invested up to this, this point into law enforcement infrastructure. And then from that, we subtract any credit again. There's some for equipment for new officers. Go ahead. So that results in a credit of $10 to $15. Go to the next one. So the net cost is right around $230 or so. Next one. And, and then when we multiply that $230 with the density of people at each land use or persons per unit, again, single-family is about 470, multifamily is 400, and then there's a wide range of rates for the non-residential. And non-residential is typically per thousand square foot, is measured. And then this gives you a comparison to other jurisdictions, and again, here, the fees are ranging anywhere from 110 to 750 for single-family. And here, there's a few more, there are like 250 to 500 range. And, go ahead, I think that's the, okay. And then the next one is parks and recreation. And in that case, the demand increased slightly. Cost per resident increased, both of those increases the fee. Credit decreased significantly, which increases the fee. So fee pretty much doubled even after indexing. So the inventory includes 12 parks with about 440 acres. And the level of service that you achieve is about 11, 12, almost 12 acres per thousand residents, and your adopted standard is 10 acres. So the adopted standard shows the intent going forward, the level of service that city would like to have, and then the actual achieved standard is what you invested up to this point. So right now, you have a higher achieved, but because the intention is going forward is only 10 acres, we use the 10 acres in the calculations, and which results in a more conservative fee, and also accounts for temporal fluctuations. So when we compare it, the city's standard is higher, definitely one of the highest. Cost component, again, we looked at any kind of data, whether it's local construction, insurance values, any cost increases that we are seeing industry-wide for the recreational facilities. Next one. So that resulted in an asset value of about $500 almost per person. And then the land component, again, looking at vacant land sales, any purchases the city made, the value of the land in the city for similar-sized parcels, that came about 35,000 per acre, and with the site preparation costs, it's about 45,000, and that translated into a value of $450 per resident. So the total cost is about $945 per resident. Again, that does measure your investment up to this point into parks and recreation So the credit component include outstanding debt service, and, and that was the main credit. So that resulted in about $20 credit. The next slide. So the net cost is about 925. Now, the last study, we had much higher credit because we were taking a period, we always look at five years back and five years in the CIP, how the city intends to fund any given infrastructure. And in the last study, there was a period where city was investing much more heavily into parks from the general fund, like, that was the time period. into parks from the general fund, like that was the time period when you built the Shane Kelly Park, Oviedo Sports Complex, and so on. So, you had a lot more other dollars going in, which lowered the impact fee. When you don't have that much help from other sources, then impact fee ends up being higher. So, then we take that cost per resident and multiply by residents per unit, and you can see it's about 2,800 for single-family, 2,500 for multifamily, and about 1,700 for mobile homes. So, it's a pretty significant increase. Multifamily increased even more because there are more people per housing units in the case of multifamily. That was the main reason, about 60 percent more. So, that compounds the increase. And then when we look at other jurisdictions, this chart ranges from as little as 200 to about 15 or 20, 200 per, for single-family. Next one. And then this one goes all the way to about 32, 3300 for single-family. Administrative facilities, again, demand remains stable. Cost increased, which increases the fee. Credit decreased, that also increased the fee, and net costs end up increasing about 30 percent for single-family. Administrative facilities includes, like, the city hall, public works department, and so on. So, it's about 50,000 square feet. And again, the costs were estimated based on similar facilities and recently built facilities. Go ahead. So, the, as far as the level of service, it's about 1.4 square feet per resident, for impact fee purposes, this is. Go ahead. And altogether, that ended up being about $360 per person. And there has not been any historical or program capacity expansion expenditures that are not paid with impact fees. So far, everything is being paid with impact fees in the case of government buildings or administrative facilities, so there was no credit. So, the fee ends up being about $730 for single-family, 623 for multifamily, and so on. And these are few jurisdictions. This is not as common of a fee, so it's fewer, but it's ranging anywhere from 185 to six, or 1,000, 1,000 or so. Go to the next slide. Okay, transportation. In this case, demand increase, which increases the fee. Cost increased, also increases, and credit decreased. So, that, all, all three variables helped increase the fee, and altogether, the fee increased about 56 percent. So, the demand, again, it measures the travel in the case of transportation. Cost looks at building, roadways, sidewalks, transit, and so on. And then the credit, again, non-impact fee funding. Go ahead. So, the way the transportation formula works is one lane, one lane mile, go easy, is like 3.6 million, and it carries about 10,600 persons. Go ahead. So, then the cost for per-person miles of capacity is $345. So, every time a person walks a mile, that costs the city about $345. An average home generates about 30 percent mile, person miles of travel. So, the total cost is about 10,000 per home. And from that, we subtract the credit of 1,700. So, the total fee for all roads in the city is about 8,500. We then calculate the portion, that's the city roads, the travel on city roads, that's about 20 percent. So, the fee for the city roads ends up being about 1,600. Since the county is also collecting in the city, we separate the city travel from the county. And demand component has several sources for the IT reference guide gives us the trip generation. Florida studies gives us all three variables, and then we look at the model data as well. Basically, trip generation is the number of trips per day, and trip length is the distance, how long those trips are, and percent new trips accounts for trips that are already on the roadway. Interstate, we subtract any travel on interstate since they are not billed with impact fees and very large investments, and then we finally convert everything to person trips because this is a multimodal fee, what you have. So, that ends up being about 30 person miles of travel for the single, single-family residential. Cost component, again, we look at any recent constructions and supplement that with other data. So, this is kind of showing you the trends, and you can see going back to 90s, and, and you see the boom that we experienced and the decline after that, and then now, the costs are still going up and trying, kind of getting closer to trend line, but it's much more stable increase rather than drastic. And this is showing the construction cost data that we have going back to 2012, and averaging about 2.9 million is the recent data. And the 2013 update was more around, impact fee report was actually, I think, using about 1.8 million for lane cost. Go ahead. So, then altogether with the design and right-of-way and so on, it gives us a cost of 3.6 million total city-county cost. And in terms of cost per person miles of capacity, that results into a $345 cost that I showed you before. Go ahead. And then the credit component, again, looks at any non-impact fee funding going from any sources toward this infrastructure. So, there's city funding, county funding, state funding. So, this is just regular annual contributions from all entities toward the transportation infrastructure. So, that gives us, for single-family, about $1,700 credit. And one thing we like to remind when we make these presentations is the fuel taxes, although they are a dedicated source for transportation, they are not indexed, and they do lose ground because of the fuel efficiency over time. They are on a, paid on a per-gallon basis. So, when we look at it over time, it, state was able to index their pennies, but the local governments are not allowed to index it. So, compared to 94, a penny then is worth maybe half of its value today. So, then you have a revenue source that's not very efficient losing ground. At the same time, costs are increasing, and it's getting harder to fund the transportation with fuel taxes. Many jurisdictions are using fuel taxes just for maintenance at this point. It's very hard to build capacity with it. We looked at the local road adjustment, we look at your network, and we made any adjustment needed, and then that resulted in about 20 percent of the travel happening on the local roads, and that's the portion you are charging for. So, that gives us a net fee of about 1,600 for single-family. And this is kind of comparing the current and the calculated fee for several land uses, and you can see it's, you know, as little as 3 percent increase to almost, like, 50, 60 percent increase in these land uses. And again, the difference, differential in these increases is because of the changes to the demand component. And this chart provides you a comparison to other jurisdictions. So, single-family is ranging anywhere from 900s to 3,000, depending on where it is. Go ahead. So, then again, in summary, the new fees altogether for the all impact fee service areas is adding up to be about 6,200 for single-family, about 4,700 for multifamily, and then a variety of, you know, rate, big range for the non-residential, depending on what the land use is. And you can see the change since, from the current adopted fee. Indexing, I mentioned it, that's something the city does on a regular basis. It does moderate the increases between annual updates, especially when the cost increases are relatively stable like we are right now, and it looks at variables, you know, the different components and applies whatever the appropriate index is. Next steps. So, today, I think you are looking for an action, and we are here to answer any questions. And with that...
Great, thank you. Any questions from council? I know we've seen the presentation. No? We're pretty good right now?
All good.
Thank you. Ash is out at the workshop. All righty. Let me just get back up to my agenda here. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I'd like to open it up. I have no written requests. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council on ordinance number 1683? Seeing and hearing none, I am going to close the public hearing portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1683.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Henkin, you're up.
No, I just want to thank you guys. I know that's not easy, you make it look easy. A lot of work goes into that, and it's, it's kind of good that we updated it for today's, today's world. We know what it costs, and we have the backup when we get challenged on it. So, thank you for your hard work on that. Appreciate it. That's all I have.
Deputy Mayor?
Looks good. I mean, a lot, a lot of work went into it, and, and I just, on this item, I just want to make sure that, you know, people know that, you know, these are done on a cost basis, and, and there's, there's no, it's, it's done through calculations and everything, and, and we're not trying to make them too high or too low or do anything with them. It's, it's definitely a calculation. And so, it is what it is, and we need to recover our, our costs.
Good point. Great. Councilman Chudnow, anything?
Oh, there's nothing really to add, except it's good to have this on a, on a, on a five-year basis, so we're to where we should be on the impact fees.
Great. Councilman Britton?
Good.
All righty. Same here, and again, just thank you for all the work that went into it. This is never easy, and we, we do appreciate that you keep us right where we need to be in the right lane with these things so we're not challenged. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just want to piggyback on, on Deputy Mayor. That, I was going to say that, but I figured maybe one of you guys would say it. That is such a key point, especially at this time of the year, that, yes, while these fees went up, you can't run a city without the income. So, it would be bad if the five of us just said, you know what, we're just going to raise them, and we don't have any backup. But this backup, when you read this report and all the work that went into it, it's very clear, this is what's needed to pay for everything. So, Bob, thank you for bringing that up. That is a very important point, so.
Great, good. Anything else? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the vote. The motion on the table is to adopt ordinance 1683 as presented. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carries. Going along, we have no first readings, no resolutions, no discussion items, so we are up to the city manager's report. Mr. Kelly, anything to add?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
All righty. Mr. Groot, anything from legal?
The only thing I'd say is that I provide the memo on puppy mills, and you can deliberate on that and decide what you might want to do sometime in the future.
That's all Deputy Mayor Pollak, so we won't steal his thunder right now. Anything else, Mr. Groot?
Appreciate it.
All righty, thank you. Communications and report. Councilman Britton, you're up.
Real quick, I was started off by Drew. Congratulations on the, the very nice Memorial Day ceremony and, and the 5K. Where's Jerry? Jerry got fourth, or third in his age group again, Mr. Athlete over there. Good job. And all I have left is, I've got a counto meeting on Wednesday that I'll attend in Altamont, and Lega City's meeting on the 14th for one of the committees I'm sitting on. That's it.
Thank you. Well, I have no report tonight. Deputy Mayor, you're up.
All right, so, on the, on the puppy mill ordinance, I would like to see if we could piggyback off of what Sanford's already done and kind of mirror that so that we don't allow puppy mills in Oviedo. Now, you know, that, that being said, the state could preempt us, but we don't know that yet. But I, I think it's a, I think it's a good policy, and, and I think it's something that we should definitely consider to look at, either at a, you know, as a discussion item in the future, or just bring it back to us as an ordinance.
Is there consensus to look at this as a discussion item at the next meeting?
Sure.
Yep, there you go.
Okay. And then, the other thing was, I went to the Oviedo's Got Talent, put on by our Oviedo Youth Council. It was over at Higerty High School, and all the proceeds they made, they made close to $700 in proceeds. It all went to the Boys and Girls Club. The, that group, I think, in the future is going to definitely be a, a nice addition to extending our, our reach to the youth of tomorrow, or the youth of today, the leaders of tomorrow, so.
They're doing a great job.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Excellent. Councilman Henkin, you're up.
Not this evening, sir.
All righty. Councilman Chudnow?
Just, we are inching closer to starting the renovations for the Boys and Girls Club.
Excellent. Could you resend that link, please, that you sent us?
I won't do that.
Thank you.
We do have a big fundraiser coming up on Saturday for the Boys and Girls Club. It's for all of Seminole County. However, any, any donations made from Oviedo will go to the Oviedo Club, the opening of the Oviedo Club, so.
What's the fundraiser?
It's an address in Alacoa. I can send everything out.
Oh, okay. We also have the, the Boston fundraiser.
On Saturday. It's going to be a busy Saturday.
And if you send the donations in online, chief, make sure you put Oviedo.
Correct.
They give you an option. Yeah.
Excellent.
I had one, one I missed.
Sure.
On the Memorial Day ceremony, one of the Gold Star family members asked if next year, we could maybe put a tent or some sort of cover over their, their seats so they're not out in the hot sun. I thought that would be a good idea if we can figure something out.
I, I think I saw a park and rec staff on top of that right after the event.
After the event? Okay, good.
I think, I think Drew, you're working on that, and speakers was the other request. Chief Chudnow, you still have the floor.
I'm good.
You're good? Anything else? Anything else with the good of the order? Nothing, Patrick? Here's your chance. You can paint city hall pink. I mean, you know, Brian's not here.
Boy, you really fit that seat good.
Come on, Brian.
Thank you.
And Patrick?
I'm good, Mayor.
You're good?
All right.
All righty, future meeting dates. We have Monday, June 17th, 6:30 PM, regular session. Monday, June 24th, budget work session. Is that scheduled, or is that still tentative, Patrick? That budget work session, as far as you know?
Scheduled.
Scheduled, all righty. So, it is now scheduled, June 24th, 6:00 PM. Monday, July 1st, 6:30 PM, regular session. July 15, we have our CRA meeting at 5:30, and then a regular meeting at 6:30. Then the next meeting is Monday, August 5th, 2019, 6:30 PM. With that being said, we will stand adjourned.